Good afternoon and thank you for joining us today as the National Board of Public Health Examiners presents the last in our series of six webinars geared towards explaining the domain areas of public health to help you prepare for the upcoming certified in public health CPH examination. Each study session is led by expert faculty from ASPTH schools and will focus on one of the domain areas of public health. Each segment will be two and a half to three hours long and include a presentation, lecture, and interactive segments. A break will be offered midway through the presentation. This presentation will be recorded and archived on the MVPHG website one to two days afterwards. Today's session feature is environmental health. Please feel free to key in your answer, your questions into the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. You'll see, we will answer your questions at the end of the session. We are pleased to have Mark Robson, Board of Governors, Distinguished Service Professor, Professor of Plant Biology, and Professor of Environmental and Occupational Health at Rutgers University, here to present to us on the topic of environmental health. Mark, you may begin.
Well, good afternoon and thank you for joining the webinar. I am very pleased to make the presentation. We'll spend the next couple hours together and probably take a five-minute break after each hour. There is an opportunity for you to ask questions and Kate and I will take time at the end to answer them, but if something pops up that's really critical, we can talk about that when you raise the question. So greetings from New Jersey where it's kind of cloudy today and a little bit cold, even though it's, we're well into spring. This afternoon, we're going to talk about sort of an introduction to environmental health and then some of the key areas that you need to know as you get ready for the examination. Toxicology, risk assessment, air, water, food, and children. And this covers a wide range of topics, of course, but I think that this will help you review from all the things you've learned in your coursework to take this examination. So health, as we know, the old definition didn't include environment, which is kind of interesting. The old definition was just health as a state of complete physical, mental, and social wellbeing, not merely the absence of disease or infirmity. And that was the World Health Organization definition that was codified in 1948. And it took almost 50 years before we got up to the environment where they went ahead and added all those things that are external to an individual human host. And I think that was sort of telling how small the environment figured into this, just as a little perspective. Now, environment, of course, has scale. We have a scale for local, a focus on environment for air and water and the subpopulation that's closest to the exposure. For instance, if you are next to the chemical plant, if you are across the swine farm, if you are down the street from the toxic waste site, that's very local. And then, of course, we have the global focus, the effect on unbounded environment, the notion of rising climate, the idea of a drought, the notion of coal burning and entire region having increased levels of air pollution. So local and global are two key issues here in environmental health. WHO decided that when they evaluated this, that more than a quarter of global diseases caused by environmental exposures that can in fact be averted. That's why those of us in environmental health have such a big job and we think we can make a difference. What's even more interesting is that WHO estimates that more than a third of the diseases in children under five are caused by environmental exposures. And finally, if we did this right and prevented environmental risk, we could save as much as four million lives a year, mostly in children in developing countries. So there's about 13 million deaths annually due to preventable environmental causes. A third of these are in the least developed regions are due to environmental causes. Forty percent of deaths from malaria, 94% of deaths from diarrhea disease could be prevented just by better environmental management. So the four main diseases influenced by poor environments are, we should know this, diarrhea, lower respiratory infections, unintentional injuries, and malaria. Measures which can be used to do this can make, just as simple, of course, as better household water storage, better hygienic measures, more judicious, and better management of the use of toxic substances and just, you know, in the workplace and in the home, and better water resource management. So when you look at environmental health on a global scale, most of these things are pretty straightforward. They're things that are a lot of common sense. So now let's put it in perspective. That's our little introduction. Let's look at the population of the world that doesn't have access to safe water. And we can see that that concentration is mostly on the African continent with some in Asia. Now keep that slide in mind as we go to the next one, where life expectancy is expressed. And here we see that those places that don't have access to safe water, it doesn't surprise us as good public health people, those places that don't have access to good clean water are also the places that typically have the lowest life expectancy. Now interestingly, as Americans, you know, we like to think that we have the highest life expectancy, but if you look carefully, you can see that our colleagues in Australia, in parts of Western Europe, and our neighbors to the north in Canada actually have a higher life expectancy than we do. So we are not at the very top, always a sort of a sobering statistic to see. Now, we have a question for you, okay? What percentage of the world's population is considered to be living in developing countries? Is it A, 40%? B, 60%? Or C, 80%? Okay, we didn't do quite as well. Almost 80% of the world is considered to be living in developing countries, okay? And of course, the fastest growing of those developing countries are the countries that are on the African continent. So the number is 80%, so about a quarter of us got it correct. And I have to be honest with you, the first time I did this, I used the same, I used the same answer that most of us did in this poll. I said 60%, I was corrected, it's closer to 80. So as you see in the next slide, especially in Africa and South America, these are considered developing countries where the most rapid-growing population is. What's really interesting is that more than 80% of the world's occupational and environmental health problems occur there. So think about it, this is where 80% of the new population is, the developing world, but they have more than 80% of the environmental and occupational health problems, a disproportionate number, in other words. They have higher rates of things like silicosis and lead poisoning and benzene poisoning. What we see in developing countries are actually the things that we saw here in our country 50 or 60 years ago when we were not as developed, or what you saw in Western Europe. So there's a time lag. Let's move on now to the basics in toxicology. Just for a little fun and to see if you remember from your toxicology lecture, at least in one environmental health, if you're an environmental health student, of course, you took toxicology and risk assessment. If you have a concentration in one of our other areas, you still took environmental health as a core course. So who was the father of toxicology? Was it Paracelsus? Was it Pasteur? Outstanding. Almost 60% of the folks got it right. It was Paracelsus. Okay, very good. That was just for a little fun. And Paracelsus was a physician that lived in the 15th century. And here is his famous quote, both the original one and the English translation for us, "All things are poison and nothing is without poison, only the dose permits something not to be poisonous." Or as we like to say in 2017, "The dose makes the poison." Kind of what your grandmother told you when you were a kid, "Everything in moderation." And it really is, it holds, okay? So substances are considered toxic at one level and sometimes a little higher level or a little more of it, then it becomes harmful, then it becomes more dangerous. So they can be toxic, or they can be really, really toxic. And just a small amount, it might not be toxic at all. You know, it's like everything else, if you overeat, even the very best cheesecake can become toxic. So let's look at that. Here's Paracelsus, in case you wondered what he looked like, or at least what people tell us he looked like, rather handsome fellow. And just to finish out the little family tree, many people say, okay, Paracelsus was the father of toxicology, who in fact was the mother of toxicology, and it's Lucretia Borja. And Lucretia was called, if I sum, the most depraved woman in history. And she was an applied toxicologist, if you will. She kept bottles of poison in her bedroom and she used them to seduce and poison her lovers. She would prick her enemies with these little arsenic drenching rings and other pieces of jewelry, was her favorite way of disposing of men. So she was very efficient, but she didn't dispose of these suitors until after she got most of their resources. So the papal states became quite wealthy during her reign, and there you can see that she was quite a lovely woman and the supposed very dangerous jewelry. Now on to some science. So one of the things we need to talk about first, of course, when we do a risk assessment, is the hazard. And some people say, well, hazard is a synonym for toxicity. It's a little more complex than that, we need to remember that. Hazard, the term hazard, actually has two important components. The toxicity of an item, how inherently dangerous it is to do harm, is it explosive, is it flammable, is it corrosive, is it toxic? And then the second most important part for us, how easy can you come in contact with it? That's a really important component. If the container that you have is explosion-proof and sealed tightly and can't break, then you can have something very toxic inside. But the hazard is actually quite low because it is, you do not come in contact with it. We have to keep that in mind. And that's really important in good public health practice. So we talk about hazard and toxicity. Now let's break toxicity out. The dose-time relationship, or to be a little more practical, how much and how often? And there are two important components. The first is acute toxicity, the one-time deal, the one-shot. The definition, of course, refers to the ability of a substance to do systemic damage from a one-time exposure in a short duration. Chronic toxicity is for the long haul. This is the one where you have long-term, low-level exposure to a particular chemical and you get those systemic effects that are harmful. Chronic toxicity is a much more complex issue to digest and to work with. You know, think about it, for acute toxicity, if there is a tanker truck that's in the middle of your city and there's an accident and the leak starts and it starts to go down on the street and affect all those people on that particular block, that's a toxic exposure of an acute magnitude. If you're working in a building that has low levels of a particular chemical and every single day you go to that building and you work there five days a week, eight hours a day, and all your coworkers, your exposure is over time, it's low level, but it's chronic, it's continuous. That's chronic toxicity. So we have this important term that we're going to talk about now for acute toxicity, and it's LD. Does LD stand for lethal dose? Legal dose? Or the largest dose? Outstanding, outstanding. 98% of the folks got it right. It's the lethal dose, LD50, what's going to kill you exactly. So let's talk about lethal dose now and see what we mean by that. So lethal dose by definition is, usually by shorthand, has a little LD and then a subscript of 50. Most of the time you will see LD50. We're going to talk about the fact that you can see LD0 and LD100, but most of the time you see LD50. And the notion of this is that it is what, half of the dose that will kill half of the population? And we give this as sort of a relative term. So if I am in an industrial setting and you come to me as my production engineer and you say, you know, Mark, I want to go ahead and I want to produce this product and I have four chemicals, they all do the same thing, I want to, I want you to pick the safest one, I'm going to evaluate. One of the things is the acute toxicity, and one of the easiest ways to look at this is what is the lethal dose of each of these chemicals, okay? So LD50 is what, the amount of chemical that is administered to kill 50% of the population. If we had an LD0, that would mean there were no deaths. If we had LD100, it would be the dose that killed the entire population. Now remember that the units here are milligrams of chemical per kilogram of body weight. So it's really important, milligrams of chemical per kilogram of body weight. And one of the reasons it's important, especially in a couple hours when we talk about children, will remember that children, of course, are much smaller than we are. Children are not just miniature adults, they're much smaller for lots of reasons, but because they're smaller, it takes a lot less to achieve the same result. In this case, not a good result. So it's milligrams per kilogram, and conversely, the larger LD50 is lower acute toxicity, the smaller LD50 is more acute. So if you have something that's LD50 of five milligrams per kilogram, and something that's LD50 of 500, the 500 is the less toxic chemical. In other words, we say that the LD50 and acute toxicity are inversely related, okay? So sometimes we'll give people on an exam in environmental health, I taught it for many, many years, and I would just say, rank the LD50s. It was usually an easy question if people paid attention. And invariably, a couple people would always see like 1,000 or 5,000 and they'd say, oh, that's the most toxic because the number's bigger. No, this time, the smaller the number, the more toxic. And just to put it in perspective for sort of kitchen measurement, if you will, you know, an LD50 of less than five, highly toxic material, if you're a kid, it's about a drop. Our EPA standard for children is about 10 kilograms or 22 pounds, that's if we consider it being a child. As an adult, we think that it's about a 70-kilogram individual or 154 pounds. Most of us weigh a little more than that. That's about a 1/16 of a teaspoon. And as you go through the list, you see if we get over 5,000 milligrams per kilogram in an adult, that's like 30 tablespoons. So it's a pretty high number, okay? Good. We do measure LC50s, which is the lethal concentration, which is something we do for respiratory toxicity. And we're not going to spend a lot of time on that, that test is fairly general in nature. We don't dig down into great detail on some of these issues, but you need to know that we have a term called LC50, and it's, the shorthand is LC and then subscript 50. And typically, you expose animals, most often mouse or rat, and you expose the mouse or the rat to different air concentrations for about an hour, and then you observe them for a 14-day period and take the data as to who died or what the acute and short-term effects were. So let's give some examples. Vitamin D is a good example. Vitamin D is, of course, a necessary vitamin for us to stay healthy. However, vitamin D is acutely toxic. It's about 10 milligrams per kilogram, or about 400,000 international units per kilogram. It's got the same toxicity as the pesticide, the organophosphate insecticide, Parathyion. It's toxic. Interestingly, if it wasn't used in food, it would have to carry a hazardous substance label. But because we use it in food and milk and we sell it as a drug, as a vitamin, it doesn't carry a hazardous label, but otherwise we're required to carry that. On the other hand, remember where we started with this discussion, it's the dose that makes the poison. Everyone needs about 10 micrograms or 400 international units per day to be healthy. So if you get too much, it's going to kill you. If you don't have enough, you're going to have a deficiency. Grandma was right, everything in moderation. Let's move to another example of toxicity. This time, it's a little more interesting, sodium fluoride. Most of us either take, took sodium tablets when we were young, pediatrician prescribed them, and you took sodium fluoride pills. If you were on well water, if you lived in a city or a suburb that had city water, probably the water was already fluoridated. And so you got your fluoride dose through your water supply. The American Dental Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and many, many, many folks are very strong advocates of fluoridated water. There are also some people that are quite adamant that it's not a good thing, but the majority of the folks, especially in the health field, are proponents of fluoridated water. We take the sodium fluoride in a very low chronic dose of about one or two milligrams daily for good dental health. That's what the pill is that you give your kids until they become, you know, teenagers. The interesting thing is that if you increase that dose by just the smallest amount, so one or two milligrams per day per kid is good. If you get up to three to four milligrams per day, you will get the modeling or discoloration of the tooth enamel. And this is a serious problem. It requires, you know, either cosmetic dentistry or lots of other kind of cosmetic approaches. It's interesting, many years ago, I gave a workshop on environmental health to nurses. And one of the nurses in the audience said, you know, professor, I moved from a rural area in upstate New York into a suburb outside of Manhattan. I went from well water, where we gave our kids the fluoride tablets, to city water and didn't realize that we in fact now had fluoridated water. Her son, who at that point was ready to enter college, had severely mottled, discolored enamel on his teeth because of the exposure to the fluoride. And so here was a health professional, like most of us are today on this webinar, and she did not realize that the water in her city was fluoridated. And of course, you know, when you move, you just move everything and you continue the routine that you do. And in fact, her son had severely mottled a tooth enamel and required some cosmetic dentistry. There are quite a few studies that support the continuation of water fluoridation, most importantly, the great reduction in dental caries, but there are still folks, as I mentioned a minute ago, that are in opposition to this. Okay, so now we have acute and chronic toxicity under our belt. Let's move on to the roots of exposure. And there are three roots of exposure that we worry about. Penetration through the skin, dermal. Absorption through the lungs, inhalation. Or passage across the GI tract, oral. And here you can see then this little schematic, you know, where the agent starts out, we have that exposure dose, they either hit the skin, the lungs, or the GI tract, they get absorbed, we have the internal dose, makes its way into the bloodstream, and eventually it gets distributed, and finally, it hits the target organ. So now it's time for another question. There are three main roots of exposure, the most common, whoops, the most common one Excellent. Once again, you guys are good, you're going to do well on the exam. Okay, the majority of our participants got it right, it's dermal, okay? That's the most common one. So let's talk about them now, let's go in a little bit of detail. So dermal is the most common way to contact skin. If I took you and I skinned you, okay, you got about 20 square feet of skin, okay? That's a lot of skin. The second most common is inhalation. The good news is, is that your skin is a pretty effective barrier against chemicals. The bad news, or I guess it's not necessarily bad, but one of the reasons that you breathe well, of course, is that your lungs are not a good barrier to chemicals. If you took the inside of your lung and stretched it all the way out, you'd have about 750 square feet of lung surface. But skin is a remarkable barrier to most chemicals, and you have about 20 square feet. But that's where, and it makes the most sense, that's the part of you that is most exposed, okay? Inhalation, a little different because, of course, the whole idea is to deliver the oxygen from the air and get it into the blood and go ahead and remove the carbon dioxide, okay? And when you get down into the very deep lung, remember that that's about one cell thick, and so it's that one thin cell that actually allows us for the oxygen to come across and migrate across into the bloodstream. That's also from a practical perspective, while you smoke pot instead of eat it, or even when you just smoke cigarettes, it's sort of an immediate, you know, result of a high because of the systemic nature, it just crosses that one cell-thick layer and off you go. Now, given the delicate nature of how the lung operates, it also is no surprise to you why, if I'm a worker, working in an asbestos factory or I'm making pottery or glass and I'm surrounded by lots of silica, that I can have damage from asbestos and silica. Of course, the two major diseases there are asbestosis and silicosis, okay? Collectively, we call these things pneumoniosis. And, you know, if you have farmers, we have something called brown lung from the dander and the dust from the livestock bedding. You know about black lung in coal miners, okay? People who work in deep mines, especially in developing countries, where there isn't a lot of respiratory protection, they have something that we call black lung from the coal dust. People who, you know, work in the food industry, processing things like sugarcane, when they run it through the sugarcane, basically, it's extracting and shredding the cane, that's a very dusty situation. If you work in a cotton mill, you get a disease called dysanosis. And the cotton dust is quite amazing. Many years ago, I toured a cotton factory in Romania, and when I left, I just felt like an entire film, excuse me, had covered me. It was just, just very, very fine film, but I was choking and coughing, seemed like, for days. So we call these things collectively pneumoniosis. But the point that we want to make here is the second most common root of exposure and very, very serious because the small particles make their way down into the deep lung. And there we have the interference with the transmission of oxygen as well as the physical barriers that start to scar the lung tissue. Oral is the third root, mainly when we eat or drink, chemicals enter the body and are absorbed through the GI tract. Absorption is amazing, it starts at the very beginning, right in your mouth, and all the way down to the end of the pipe. You know, sometimes if you have small children, the pediatrician will actually prescribe a suppository and you will administer the medication rectally. So it is quite interesting how effective that is. Those of you that have people, know people that have angina, of course, you take the nitrobliserum pill and you put it under your tongue because that absorption happens very rapidly. Ethyl alcohol is absorbed rapidly in the stomach as well as the intestine. That's why sometimes if you see people that are drinking a lot of alcohol and are on an empty stomach, you'll see the effects so quickly. Now, they will be just as drunk if they had a stomach full of food. You know, sometimes you'll see people make a statement, kind of a silly statement, well, I'm going to eat a lot first so I don't get drunk. Well, that's not true. If you eat a lot, you're going to just delay the effects of the alcohol. The alcohol is going to be the same result. But if you drink on an empty stomach, you'll see the reaction, the response, much more quickly. But you can drink the same amount with a full stomach, and if you were to have a blood alcohol test or, you know, a breathalyzer test, you would still, in fact, show the same level of intoxication. So eating while you're drinking is not going to keep you from getting in trouble if you try to drive and get stopped by the policeman. So we talked about oral, dermal, and inhalation. We talked about acute and chronic toxicity. How in the world do we measure all this? Well, you saw the rodent that was there. We use a lot of rodent models. In the last 20 years, we've been more sophisticated now with molecular models. It's hard to measure toxicity. We base toxicology and risk assessment assumptions on animal models. But the problem comes up with... But the problem comes up with what animals do we use? Sometimes we find a very good surrogate for us with some chemicals. And sometimes we don't find the best one. So monkey and man, monkey and man are fairly similar. Monkeys do respond to methanol the same as man. Monkeys do not respond to nitrobentene the same as man. The use of animal data goes way back during the time when Congressman Delaney was a member of Congress and in the late 50s pushed the Food Additives Amendment Act, which most people called the Delaney Clause because the congressman was a pioneer and a champion of the importance of saying, we have to have animal data to see if these things are toxic. And Congressman Delaney was on the right track. Of course, he sort of simplified it quite a bit. But the statement was in the Delaney Amendment, if a food additive is considered to be a carcinogen, if it causes cancer at any level in any species. And that became a huge problem. Because in those days, any level at any, in any species could be a fairly high level. That was the 1950s, remember, we measured things in parts per hundred. Now in 2017, of course, we measure things in parts per trillion. So you can't say it can't be there at any level because now the level is orders of magnitude less. So what affects toxicity? Well, when we look at the animals, the first thing of course is the age. Age has an influence on the toxicity of many models. I'm much older than everyone that's on this webinar. And so in some cases, I am much more vulnerable to a toxic assault than all of you. That's good for you. Not particularly good for me. Okay, but it's not always the case. Sometimes, like everything in toxicology, it depends. DDT is not acutely toxic to newborn rats. However, as the rats mature, it becomes more toxic. The LD-50 is about 200 to 300 milligrams per kilogram. That's for DDT. Now you flip that over, the organophosphate pesticide paraphyion is much more acutely toxic in newborn rats. The neonate rat is much more susceptible than the adult rat. So it depends often on how mature the enzyme system is that can actually support the, you know, the chemical being metabolized in the body of either the neonate or the mature animal. So age has a big difference in our ability to handle these foreign chemicals. The place that protects us the most, of course, is in our liver and the enzyme system embodied in the liver. Sex has an impact on the toxicity of certain chemicals. Again, it depends. Male rats is an example are 10 times more sensitive to liver damage than female rats. If you go ahead and you castrate the rat, make him very angry, but if you go ahead and castrate the rat, the rat will have the same response as if it was a female rat. So obviously then this response is hormone dependent when we say something is affected by the sex of the laboratory animal. So now we're going to look at some basic dose response curves. When we look at a dose response curve, the x-axis or XY curve, okay, the x-axis for the graph is which one? Oh, home run. Everybody got it right, 100. Outstanding, okay, outstanding. So now the next one is going to be a little less fun. The Y-axis then, the answer is, and Katie, we won't bother doing this because we know, oh, you didn't do it, okay. Let's see, really, oh, there you go. This is a smart group of folks. Very good. Okay. All right, so let's look at the curve. When I was putting those questions, so I have to confess to you, you know, Kate is very progressive and, and Mark is less so. She goes, oh, you know, Dr. Robson, we can do some questions along the way. So this was a big step for me to put in some questions. And I guess, you know, if I give you the answer to one and you're paying attention, now maybe one or two of you fell asleep already, but if you're paying attention, you got the other one. So that was, that was a gift. It was my mistake. Next time we'll just ask one question. So here is generic dose response curve. And remember, we call it dose response because the x-axis is the dose, you see that, 200, 300, 400. And the Y-axis is the response. Now, the response we're measuring this time is mortality. But suppose for a minute, before we talk about the particular LD-50, suppose for a minute that we're doing drug testing and we're looking for how well the drug works. And we still do dose response, okay? So the dose is still along the x-axis, but this time the response might be, you know, how many people got better? So the number cured or, you know, the improvement or the increase in weight or whatever we're measuring. So it really is a dose response. In this case though, for LD-50 in the example I give you, we're looking for the percent mortality. And if you look at this picture, I suppose, Kate, I should have gone ahead and done a question on this one. If you look at the LD-50, so look at the LD-50 for a minute and just, just take a second and look at it. Okay, and now I'll tell you, it's about 210 or 215 for this chemical. This, this chemical that's unnamed, this example we have, okay? Now, now we don't label the axis. I want to demonstrate something equally as important as how to find the LD-50, but to interpret the range for LD-50s. Remember, I said to you about 15 minutes ago, it's important to look at both the LD-0 and the LD-100 as well as the LD-50. LD-50 is a common thing, okay? It's sort of like the target that we all have. But as a good toxicologist, you want to look at the numbers at the beginning and the end too. So here we have in our generic curve, okay, LD-0, LD-50 and of course, LD-100. Now watch this one and then we'll go over here and we marked LD-0, LD-50. And if we took the number out, the line out far enough, we had LD-100. So the difference between this one and this one, of course, is the slope. Why is this important? Well, because suppose I have a chemical in an industrial process or in a workplace or even in just, I can choose a couple of different chemicals for even something that I'm doing in a recreational setting, choosing a pesticide to control the quality of the ball playing field, okay, the athletic field. And I want to know the LD-50 and obviously I want to get the one where the LD-50 is the highest number, so it's the lowest toxicity. But if I'm really concerned, I also want to ask for the data sheet to see what the LD-0 and the 100 is, to see the range. Because people do not do things absolutely right every single time. People make mistakes. If I make a mistake here and put a little too much on, I've gone from a safe level to maybe a not safe level, a dangerous level, and in very short period of time. If I apply the correct amount to kill whatever the problem is or to accomplish whatever I want to in the manufacturing process, and I overapply here, I have a much longer range of doses before I reach a situation where the toxicity is more dangerous. So you see what we're trying to say here. So this particular chemical, assuming the actual LD-50 number is the same, the range from LD-0 to LD-100 is a very short range of doses here and quite a large range of doses here. Good. Okay, let's talk about chronic toxicity. That was all acute toxicity. Now we do chronic. LD-50, by the way, is a measurement mostly applied to acute toxicity. That said, in a pinch, the LD-50 will also give you an idea. It's designed to measure acute toxicity, but will give you an idea sometimes of the chronic nature, not always, but ballpark. Chronic toxicity, of course, is much more complicated. And interestingly, it was first recognized many, many centuries ago in workers, in occupational illnesses. The early physicians noticed that people who had really hard, difficult jobs, had poor health, certain trades just lent themselves to higher rates of poor health. And Hippocrates described what he called in his early writing, severe colic in men who extracted metals. We now know that to be lead poisoning. Pliny the Elder wrote of people who worked in quicksilver mines and what he later described as mercury poisoning. And as you know, mercury, of course, is a neurotoxin. The famous child's book about Alice in Wonderland, the Mad Hatter, people used mercury to block the hats, to treat the felt, the Bieber pelts and things that were used to make the fine hats. And of course, they had high levels of mercury exposure. These high levels of mercury exposure over time became very neurotoxic and of course, people went mad. So the Mad Hatter had severe neurological impairment and he had that because of his exposure to mercury. A dose response curve for chronic toxicity is much more complicated than a dose response curve for acute toxicity because you hit thresholds. So let's look at the curve. So we're down at zero at time zero, at dose zero. As we go across, we have, you know, no effect for quite a while over a certain range of doses, then we hit a threshold. When we hit that threshold, about a fifth of the way into that x-axis, we start to see that as we increase the dose, we see an increased effect. And of course, since we're measuring toxicity, we would assume this is a toxic effect. And that'll continue to climb and it'll become, you know, one to one. The more you increase, the more the problem, until you hit a plateau, a maximum effect. And we hit that maximum or that plateau, of course, so you can't get anywhere, you can have more than a hundred percent death. Sometimes you'll see in certain kinds of chemicals where it'll be sort of bimodal, where you'll have a period where it'll peak a certain dose and then it'll start to decline. And if you go out long enough, you'll start to see the increase again in the percentage of animals that die. So that's the dose part. Let's talk about some of the chronic health effects based on dose. One of the classic ones is the chemical thalidomide. Thalidomide was marketed outside the US. Thankfully, it was not marketed in the United States. And one of those little things that you see on Google, when you go to Google, which as we know is the great toxicological reference, you'll see a couple months back, Dr. Frances Kelsey, who was the woman at the FDA who did not allow this chemical to be registered in the United States. She died at a very old age and was a great public health hero because she just wasn't too comfortable with this chemical being registered and used. And I'm going to tell you why now. So it was marketed outside of the United States, primarily in Europe. It was used to combat nausea, morning sickness, and it was used as a sleeping pill and it had a lot of, a lot of uses, but they were almost all in pregnant women who had all the challenges of the early onset health issues with pregnancy. It was finally withdrawn in 1961, had been on the market for, you know, several years and was discovered to be a teratogen. Now, what's interesting is not all animal species tested produce the same results that you see in humans. Okay, thalidomide has a very distinct, which you're about to say, a very distinct response in humans. So here is what thalidomide looks like. No, you do not need to know the structure. It's just that some people on the webinar like chemical structures and look at that and go, oh yeah, that makes sense. And other people will go, my goodness, how quickly is it going to take that off the screen? So we'll take it off the screen for you. But it was very interesting when a woman was pregnant and took thalidomide and she took it between 34 day and day 50, so between day 34 and day 50, after her first period, after her, excuse me, after her last period, let's say, after her last period, the risk of having a child with focal melia was increased by about 20%. If you took the thalidomide outside of that range, and typically you're not taking it really outside of the range, at the end of the range, not after 50 plus days, but you might be taking it earlier, maybe 20 days, 22 or three days, there is no effect. But in that very discrete window of 34 to 50 days, you have this remarkable increase in the probability of the baby missing arms or having very truncated arms and legs, missing their ears or and being profoundly deaf. This whole, this missing or short legs is called focal melia. Okay? So it was an amazing effect of this chemical and you can see the avoidness during pregnancy. It wasn't solely in the United States, which is a very, very good thing. Here are some of the babies from some journal articles that go back quite a ways now. There you go. It's because it's not in big use now. It is still in use and I'll tell you about that in a minute. But these are the children. You can see the shortened arms and the legs. The shortened bones in the arms and the legs, really very, very tragic. It's used today to treat leprosy or Hansen's disease. It's used today to treat in the, some issues associated with HIV/AIDS. So it still has a place in the treatment scheme, but they will not administer it to a woman of childbearing age, just for all the reasons that we just shared. Here's another toxic material that made its way into our lives and this is diethylstevastrol or DES. DES was prescribed in the United States and it was used in a significant amount back between the 40s and the 70s. Okay. The offspring, the female offspring of the women who took diethylstevastrol exhibited a number of reproductive problems, okay? The most prominent one being vaginal adenocarcinoma, serious issue. It is estimated that one in 1,000 pregnancies were exposed to diethylstevastrol during that 30 year period. This is the chemistry for diethylstevastrol, in case you want to see the structure. And this is interesting, this is advertisement from 1957. And you can see I typed over on the side what the advertisement said, since it's not the best picture, beautiful little baby, but it's hard to read the script. And this is an advertisement for 1957 that says, recommended for routine prophylaxis in all pregnancies. 96% live delivery with Desflex in one series of 1,200 patients, bigger and stronger babies too. So we did prescribe that. And what did we see in the children born from the women who had taken diethylstevastrol? The girls had lots of reproductive cancers, vaginal cervical carcinomas, uterine abnormalities, ectopic pregnancies, miscarriages and so on. For the boys that were born of these women, later on, they just demonstrated abnormal genitalia, things like microphallus and hypospadias, they had epididibals cysts and cysticular problems. So clearly reproductive health effects on the offspring of the folks who took the chemical. We're going to spend a little bit of time now on risk assessments and we did our little overview on toxicology. Okay, so let's look at a few things here. Risk assessment and the communication of risk is a great challenge. And from the cartoon, the Little Harris cartoon that came out of science a few years back, where the guy says, hey, I thought we were working with the same data set. Risk assessment is as much an art as it is a science. And risk assessment is not a precise science. It helps give you an estimate. So it's hard to figure out how risky something is and even more difficult to articulate that to the lay public. You and I, of course, are trained in public health. We are fairly attuned to understanding about data, hearing about data and trying to make this all make sense. The lay public, of course, isn't that used to our numbers. So I wanted to talk about how we present this risk before we actually do the risk assessment. I reversed this from a few years ago. I decided to put this up front. So we have the cartoon with some data that's all over the place. Now let's look at some real data that's all over the place. And this comes out of a risk assessment text to demonstrate the point I want to make now. And Crouch and Wilson back, it's an older article now, it's in their risk assessment book from 1982, but it's the example that most of us like to use. Accidental deaths per million tons of coal mined in the United States. And we look at this, the x-axis are years, increments of five, the Y-axis are the deaths per 10 to the six tons of coal, okay? And coal that is mined. And if you looked at this, you'd say, well, gosh, over time, from 1950 to 1970, in general, the accidental deaths have decreased. If you look at that data set, based on coal that is mined, same data set, change the axis. The years stay the same. The years stay the same in the X, but this time on the Y axis, we do accidental deaths per one thousand coal mining. And here you see very, very noisy data, up and down, up and down, up and down. Now what typically happens is one of these high peaks is a major accident in coal mining. You know, it's like if you look at air travel and air travel safety, the numbers are very compelling. You know, I think that the data is something like if you drove from New York to California or you flew from New York to California, you have a six hundred times greater risk of having a problem, an accident or death if you drive versus if you flew. However, if you're on that one airplane that for some reason has a problem and crashes, then you're one of three or four or five hundred people that die in the plane crash. So that particular year, there'd be a big blip in the curve versus just the normal driving you see with, you know, which sort of gets blended into the traffic accidents. So per a thousand coal mining employees or per million tons of coal, same number of people died. Here it looks like we're making progress. Here it tells us that we really are going just up and down. So we've got a generic risk equation. We're going to look at what is risk? So risk is equal to what? A, B, or C? Hazard times exposure, hazard times time, hazard times toxicity. Let's see how we did. Right, most people got it right. It's hazard times exposure. Very good. Nice job. And so now let's talk about that. So the generic risk equation is risk is equal to hazard times exposure. And if you remember my comment earlier where I said, you know, when we look at hazard, it's not just the toxicity of the compound, but it also relates to the ability for us to come in contact with this dangerous compound. What are the four steps? The most important four steps, what you need to know is hazard of benefication, toxicity assessment, that's the dose response, exposure assessment, and risk characterization. These are the four major steps for risk assessment. Now, some of you on the webinar are clinicians, doctors, PAs, nurses, and other folks involved in clinical healthcare. For you, you get steps five and six as well. I guess sometimes the rest of us do too, but you have it more often. And that's managing the risk and communicating the risk typically to the patient. And as we see in the cartoon where the doctor is standing there over the sick child and dad says, what made him sick? And he goes negligible levels of carcinogens. Right away, we know that's just a conglomeration of words we use in health science that aren't used appropriately, but people do use them fairly often. Here's another way to describe risk. It doesn't always have to be a number. You know, people love to give you numbers. It can be very graphic. This is an old newspaper advertisement that was put in the major newspapers one Sunday many years back by the Natural Resources Defense Council on how dangerous the chemicals were that are on our apples. From Carburel to Guthion. Guthion is a very potent and at that time highly used organophosphate insecticide. Methylparaphytite a little further over, highly toxic, widely used organophosphate insecticide. Captan, top row on the far side, a fungicide, but very mutagenic. And endosulphate, an old chlorinated compound in the same family as DDT. So this was a way for people to show you that what do you have in the most exposure to in this particular case, Guthion? What's the most toxic one in that list? Guthion. So we're going to do a risk assessment. Risk is equal to hazard times exposure. We know that. When we get ready to do the risk assessment, we said we have to identify the hazard and we have to do the dose response. Part of that means we have to understand what the risk is. So let's look at something that's important. I used that cartoon for apples. So let's figure out why apples are important. Well, we consume most of our apples, about two-thirds of them fresh, a third processed. Grapes, it's the other way around and potatoes are almost all fresh when we consume them. Okay? You gotta know, if you're worried about something, how these products are consumed. You gotta know, in the case of the apple example, what kind of apple or what form you are consuming in. And now I'm going to tell you why this example is important. Back in the 1980s, there was a big concern about the risk of apples and people started to evaluate apples and apple juice because who's a big consumer of apple juice? Well, look in the middle of the slide, it's infants. Okay? And in addition to the pesticides that were in that graphic, there was a compound called Dimethiazide. And Dimethiazide, that's its common name, its trade name was Alar. You know pesticides are like pharmaceutical products. They have a common name, okay? And they have a trade name. So for instance, Tylenol is the Johnson and Johnson trade name for the drug that you normally use to go ahead and manage your headaches. Okay? But we call it Tylenol because Tylenol is a very common trade name for acetaminophen, which is the common name. So Dimethiazide is the name like acetaminophen and Alar is the name like Tylenol. So Alar was used on apples. It made them more red. It kept them on the tree longer. It didn't fight any kind of disease or insect. It wasn't particularly good about anything else, improving nutrition or anything else, but it made them look red and kept them on the tree a little longer. Might have helped them a little bit in storage as well, because we store apples during the winter months. What came out in the evaluation of apples is that as we processed apples, we found that it, the Dimethiazide would metabolize as something called unsymmetrical dimethylhydrazine. And unsymmetrical dimethylhydrazine is quite toxic material. It's kind of similar to rocket fuel. And so the risk assessment for this led us to worry about the use of Dimethiazide in apples. And the apple folks did the risk assessment on the average person or the adult. Okay? And the adult, as you see, does not consume a lot of apple juice. The people who were concerned, the NRDC and other advocacy groups did the risk assessment on the, what we call the vulnerable or the susceptible population, the folks who are really at risk in this case, infants and children. And the consumption rate, as you can see, was considerably higher. Plus the fact that we know from our earlier discussion, these are much more at-risk population. And so there was quite a debate. The debate was played out on Sixty Minutes. Sixty Minutes became the Alar Lightning Rod. There was no social media in those days. You had to wait till, you know, until Sunday night at seven o'clock to watch Sixty Minutes. And they showed you that the risk was quite great in kids. The Apple Institute came out and they sued Sixty Minutes and there was quite a bit of back and forth. The end of the day, Alar, the Unirile Chemical Company withdrew its registration and EPA no longer registers Alar. Alar is a chemical that can be systemic in the apples, meaning it can stay in the apples' conducting tissue. So we did continue to find some Alar in apple products even after the farmer had stopped using them because of the systemic nature of the product. So this, why I put the slide up for you is to say, yes, risk assessment is important, but not just doing the numbers. You have to know what the numbers mean. And in this picture, you can see if you have to look at who's at risk, it's infants. And so if you base your consumption data on an adult, on all of us on this webinar, you're probably not going to find a lot of risk. However, if you do it on the vulnerable population, the risk is significant. And that's important to remember. When you go into a store today and you look at apples, you won't find Alar, probably. Now this, I said probably. I took this picture in my grocery store where I go each week. I was also asked to leave the grocery store when I was caught taking pictures. This is a picture about a few years back before we had such good phones and our camera we could be more clever. And, you know, I guess most people would just buy the groceries, but me as a good toxicologist was standing there on the corner of the aisle taking pictures. The reason I took the picture is because it was all about the country of origin. Apple juice in the United States, because of all of the press and the actions by the US EPA, apple juice did not have Alar in it. But not all countries were compelled to follow those US EPA rules. Some countries still kept using the Alar. On this shelf of apples at the time, not now, I looked last week when I was shopping, but if I took the picture last week, it'd be quite a different picture. On this shelf at the time, some of those apple juice models came from Poland and some came from Hungary and I think some came from Uruguay. And so it was a very different country of origin. So even if you think that you have a regulation that'll protect you in your country, that doesn't necessarily mean the product that you're enjoying comes from that place. Remember the fresh apples weren't the concern. It was the processing of the apples and during that heating is when the unsymmetrical dimethylhydrazine was formed. That's when the risk came in. All right, we're going to take now a, let's take a seven-minute break. Okay? So according to my Apple Watch, it is two minutes after two. So we'll start again at 10 minutes after two. We'll make it an eight-minute break. Okay, see you in a few minutes. Okay, see you in a few minutes. Okay, are we back? We're ready? Good. So welcome back from our little break. And what we ought to do now is give some more examples. We're gonna give an example of a situation where we had the risk with ALAR, where we did the risk wrong. And we found ourselves saying the risk was small when it was great because we hit the wrong target. Now I'm gonna look at a little different situation where we had a risk and we had the risk wrong. Notice, we get the risk wrong a lot. We had the risk wrong because of the animal species that we picked in the other direction. And this is saccharin. So saccharin, the little pink packet you see in most restaurants for artificial sweetener. Saccharin was developed a long time ago. And if you have any Hopkins people on the phone, you are the folks that developed saccharin. But it was well in hundred-plus years ago, okay? Back in 1878. And it sort of sat on a shelf. It wasn't really popular. And then after the sugar shortage in the First World War, it got some popularity. And then when people became serious dieters in round one of dieting in the 1960s, when we started to have our weight epidemic, saccharin became one of the first calorie-free sweeteners. And so that's when most people knew it. And they knew it as sweet low and this familiar pink packet. Again, here is the chemical structure if you're interested. Okay. Okay, we're not advanced. There we go, now we're advancing. So let's make sure that we did it to the right side. So what happened was, back in the 1970s, they did some laboratory studies using rats. And they noticed that this strain of rat developed bladder cancer. And at the time in the 1970s, it's when many of the environmental regulations were signed. It's when many environmental laws went into place. The US EPA was established and many other things. We went ahead and we saw Congress being really proactive. And they said, wait a minute. We're gonna mandate that if you put saccharin in a container, in a product, the product's container has to say, "Use of this product may be hazardous to your health. This product contains saccharin, which has been determined to cause cancer in laboratory animals." That was a very strong statement for that long ago. And of course, most people who knew the data said, well, we don't really think that's the case. But of course, in that strain of rat that was used in that study, certainly it was bladder cancer in that strain of rodent. And so they did more and more studies. And they found that the more of the studies they did, they were not able to demonstrate in human behavior through epidemiology studies or in other kinds of test animals, just in that rat. You know, that rat showed more at higher doses in these male rats, you had the cancer. In other laboratory animals and observations from humans, because at this point saccharin had been in commerce for a while and in the food supply. People were using it. You did not see incidents and incidence of bladder cancer in humans. So that was a quandary for folks. And so time passed and, oops, why is that? Yeah, time passed. And after it happened to go on with studies in other animals and more and more human Epi, Congress reversed it and saccharin was actually taken off the list of cancer products. So there was a window of time where that label carried that cancer risk. And then after more studies were done, people were confident that it was that strain of male rat at those doses that got bladder cancer. Humans, female rats, other animal species did not. And so the label for cancer came off the container. And you still see saccharin as well as other artificial sweeteners in your restaurants and saccharin is still used in some diet products. So that time we got it wrong. We had the wrong animal and the wrong dose, okay? Let's move over to air now, okay? And let's spend a little time on air. Air is important to look at from a general public. I'm gonna just pick the major media to prep for our exam. The earliest form of anthropogenic airborne emission is wood smoke. You know, since the time of the cave person. Cave men and cave women were making air pollution. They were making air pollution indoors in their cave with wood to burn for warmth and to cook their food. So for many millennia, we know this has been a problem. In more recent times, coal smoke has contributed greatly to air pollution problems, starting from the early days of the Industrial Revolution until today. There are still lots and lots of coal-fired plants all around the world, particularly in developing countries, particularly in China, that are the main sources of energy for industry and for power and for light and residential use. Coal is a big one and coal is a big contributor to air pollution. Okay, we're not getting good success here, Katie, with the, there we go, with the advancing all of a sudden. Sources of air pollution are multiple. From industrial sources like you see on the right side of this line, where you see what's coming out of the stack. You see the automobile there in the middle, as well as, if you look carefully, this is a little graphic from the US EPA, of all the sources of air pollution in your home, from your HVAC system to your computer, your stove, the car that you parked in the garage, the materials that were used to build your home and of course, the traffic that runs outside. So you have lots and lots of sources of air pollution. The important thing to remember is that the indoor air pollution sometimes can actually exceed the outdoor air pollution in some circumstances. And in some parts of the country, indoor air pollution can in fact have higher levels of some pollutants than outside. Important fact to remember. So let's look specifically at, oops, let's look specifically at some sources of, this thing is not cooperating. Specifically at some sources and some examples. Here is one of the famous air pollution examples from Denora, Pennsylvania in 1948. Those of you at the University of Pittsburgh, this is in your backyard, okay? And there's a really interesting book called When the Smoke Ran Like Water by Dr. Devrock Davis. And Dr. Davis describes what took place in Denora. And here's a photo, famous one you can pull off the web. Denora, PA at noon back in 1948. And the story is that in October of 1948, from the 26th to the 31st, 20 people died, but thousands were hospitalized due to air pollution. Remember in those days, this part of Pennsylvania, along with many other parts of our country. I'm from New Jersey, so we had lots and lots of industry then as well. There was lots of mining and metal processing and things like that going on. The steel mills were huge in Pennsylvania. Pittsburgh area is noted for its steel mills. Air pollution was very, very bad. And there was an air pollution, what we call a temperature inversion. The cold air was trapped and it trapped the pollution from the steel mills and the smelters and all the other activity. And it acted just like a cap over Denora. Denora and other smog problems eventually led to the United States coming up with Clean Air Act. But this was a remarkable event. The inversion from the temperature meant that the cold air hovered over and acted like a lid and kept the pollution in that area, okay? And we'll give another example, probably show it a little bit better. London smog of 1952, just four years later. So Denora, Pennsylvania, 20 people dead, thousands hospitalized. Later, many of those people developed lots of serious injuries and went on to die prematurely. Obviously, everybody died, but died prematurely. 1952, the London smog. Again, it was a meteorological event, okay? Here's the data for the London smog. It's kind of interesting. In those days, we measured air pollution using the smoke index, okay? Milligrams per cubic meter. And you can see that on the far side of the slide. On the other side of the slide, on the Y-axis, you see the deaths per day. On average, at that point in time in the 1950s, probably 250 plus or minus people would die a day in London. And all of a sudden, this rate went up by a factor of four. More than 1,000 people were dying per day. The first group of people to notice this behavior, this number of people dying, were not the healthcare professionals, were not the environmental professionals. It was the undertakers. Because of course, they had to accommodate an increased number of funerals and find coffins and everything else. There was a coffin shortage. So as it went out in that period of time, you could see it jumped from 250 to almost 1,000 for several days in a row. And then it tracked perfectly along with the air pollution measurement, which in those days was smoke. Now, one of the things I'm always amazed at as somebody who, you know, went to undergraduate days without a calculator. I know that's hard for you to believe on the other end of this webinar, but you had a slide roll or just used a yellow pad. There were no devices of any type in those days. When you go on to Google and Google Images now, you can do what I did for this picture, which is just Google, you know, climatic conditions in London, 5 December 1952. And magically, you get the quality, air quality map and the weather map and all these other maps for that particular day. So here is the weather map for that particular day. And you can see where the high came in. The high came in and sat over London. You see which way the wind's blowing. And because it did that, it sort of allowed for a temperature inversion, just like we talked about before, and nothing moved. And so the high sat over London and the pollution didn't blow off to the English coast. It stayed there and the pollution problem resulted in all of those deaths. It was just like you put a lid on a jar. It got cold. When it got cold, people lit their stoves. The temperature inversion meant that that cold air was there and acting as a sort of a canopy. And so the chimneys were fired on the 5th of December. But the smoke and the soot and the other particles just stayed low to the ground. People had severe respiratory responses to it, upwards of those 1,000 people per day. So types and sources of emissions to the air. There are two general types. There are criteria air pollutants. They're called CAPS. And there are toxic air contaminants, okay? TACs. The CAPS are the ones that we worry about the most. They are in place and EPA has established national ambient air quality standards. The other group are called hazardous air pollutions. And there isn't a cap for them, okay? Everything that's not a cap is called a TAC. All right, so there are two basic categories. The, among those, in the Clean Air Act, we have what we call primary standards and secondary standards. The secondary standards are there to protect public welfare. They're there to protect, you know, buildings and crops and to, you know, to avoid areas where you have decreased visibility. Those are secondary, okay? They call them public welfare standards. The primary ones, the ones we're gonna spend some time on now, primary ones are to protect public health. That includes folks who are sensitive. In a sensitive population, you know, if you do a distribution of people in the population, you have elderly people who have usually a series of health problems and starting to have compromised immune systems and things. On the other end, you have little children who have underdeveloped immune systems. Their whole organ systems are still developing. They're rapidly growing. They breathe more air per unit. They drink more water. And then of course, you have people who are in this case sensitive to air pollutants, people who are highly asthmatic. So the primary standard is there in place to protect those sensitive populations. A sensitive population is a group of folks who is not always in the best health and has some kind of condition that will make them more susceptible. Sometimes we use the word susceptible instead of sensitive to these particular pollution problems. Motor vehicles are the big culprit here for the air pollution problems. Motor vehicles cause about a quarter of the emissions for ozone and about a third of the emissions for nitrogen oxide. Same way, particulate and sulfur dioxide emissions are also big for motor vehicles, okay? Particulates, about a fifth of them. And so we also think that more than three-quarters of the carbon monoxide emissions are produced each year from transportation sources. This is especially important in a time when we're trying to understand where environmental regulations are going. Historically, going way back into the 70s, when a lot of these came into being, the high idea was always to continue to decrease the levels of these pollutants in the environment, to tighten the standards, to put in place safeguards. In other words, for your car, it's the catalytic converter, okay? If you're, if you're a small industry, it's this special kind of capture on smoke stacks so that you just don't emit. There are scrubbers and all sorts of things. There is a host of things that were put in place and mandated to reduce the emissions, all of these different emissions, whether it's on your car or on the equipment that you use to manufacture something. And those, of course, now are being reviewed and we are hopeful that most of those will stay in place. But when you look at this picture, you see that motor vehicles win the prize as far as one of the primary sources of air pollution. The estimated cost from all of this is very, very high. People estimate that there's probably a $40 to $50 billion bill associated with outdoor air pollution and human health costs. Ground level ozone, the smog, that's so famous in places like Los Angeles. Los Angeles gets blamed for all the smog. There are lots of smoggy cities in the United States. I guess the LA smog is just the most famous. But in a study that just focused on 13 cities, not the entire country. But American Lung did a study a few years ago and said that 50,000 emergency room visits and about a third of those people in that survey were admitted, okay? So 50,000 visits with 15,000 admissions per year are linked to smog just in these 13 major cities. People feel that, you know, more than 60,000 Americans die from lung and heart disease caused by the particulates from power plants, motor vehicles and other kinds of photochemical reactions in the atmosphere. So it's a big deal from a public health perspective. Once again, like we've said routinely, and this comes from the EPA picture, children are more susceptible. They have higher rates of pneumonia, bronchitis, bronchitis. They have lots and lots of issues. Decreased lung function, more severe asthma, increases in the amount of asthma and so on. So here are some of the common air pollutants. And we're just gonna discuss them briefly. You don't need to know them in great detail, but you need to be mindful of them as you get ready for this. And the first one, of course, is ozone. Ozone's important because students will often say, you know, I'm confused, Dr. Robinson. There's a hole in the ozone layer. That's bad. I just read the paper this morning. They talked about the danger of increased ozone levels in my community. So what's the deal? And that's a very reasonable and thoughtful question asked by the student. And the idea is there is good ozone and there's bad ozone. The good ozone is the ozone that is up there in the atmosphere that is plugging that hole, the hole in the ozone layer. It's plugging the hole to keep the UVB radiation out so that you don't have too much exposure to damaging UVB rays. That's the good ozone, plugging the hole. The bad ozone is the ozone down near us along the ground. That's a function of the volatile organic compounds plus the oxides of nitrogen mixing with heat and sunlight. And that equals the ozone that's bad for us. That's the principal component of smog. So we do have good ozone and we have bad ozone. The good ozone is blocking the ultraviolet B radiation. The bad ozone is a result of combustion when you mix heat, light, volatile organics and oxides of nitrogen. The sources for ozone are the reaction products of VOCs and NOx. The health effects, and you're gonna find in a minute that the health effects for all of these pollutants seem the same. Gee whiz, he didn't even change the slides. Now, in general, the pollutant effects in air pollution, whether the pollutant is ozone or one of the others, the results are about the same. Breathing problems, reduced lung function, irritation. Reduced resistance to colds and other infections is really important. And it speeds up how quickly your lungs will age. In homes, you know, the levels can be pretty high, up to five ppm, okay? Typically, in the kitchen or near your gas. Okay, typically in the kitchen or near your gas heater or any other gas appliance or gas dryer is where we see this increased level and it's usually a function of the poor venting of the appliance. And that's why we see that. I just put this in to show you how variable and difficult it is to get a hold of this. This is an older slide, but I like what it demonstrates, so I continue to use it many years later. This is New Jersey slide. You know, it's very dangerous to pick on other states. You usually have to pick on your own state. So I'm a New Jersey person as your instructor today. And I, if I was in another state, I could easily pull up another slide and sadly it wouldn't be too different unless I was, you know, in the very pristine parts of the Northwest United States. These are days when the one hour standard is exceeded and it's a block of time from the late eighties through two thousand and three. And why do I show you this? I show you this because, you know, if you first look at this and you're running for office or something, you know, if you unfortunately, well, let's start with a good one. If you got elected in eighty-eight and you showed them what the eighty-nine numbers were and they say you did a heck of a good job. If you, but if you watch the trend, you know, eighty-nine, ninety and ninety-one, they continue to go up. If you look at it over time, which is how you have to look at data like this, it's up and down and up and down and up and down, which I think is really kind of interesting as well. So it's not tied to anything in particular that we know of, other than the weather conditions and vehicle miles traveled. But this is days on which the one hour ozone standard was exceeded. And some of it, if nothing else, has to do with just the number of good days for traveling and weather good in the summer where you get the higher rates of ozone. Carbon monoxide, it's a very serious problem, colorless, odorless, non-irritating. So when you, you could get carbon monoxide poisoning very easily. And a good public health person, you know, you have to have that CO detector and change the battery and make sure that the detector in your detector is actually a good one. There are there are some pretty expensive ones on the market, but there are some ones that are pretty modestly priced that if you look at Consumer Reporter or some other unbiased rating company, you can see there are a lot of good ones that are within the reach of most folks, but you need to have one because it's colorless and it's odorless and it's not irritating. So you can quickly become poisoned and literally never know it. I was reading something the other day, they're talking about the drop in incidence of suicides by automobile and the reason that it's dropped considerably because the CO was the primary reason that you would die was that newer vehicles have better emission standards. And it said, if you want to kill yourself via carbon monoxide, you need to have a lot of older vehicles. I know that's a metaphors thought. Exposure to high levels of CO are the leading cause of poisoning deaths in the United States. When you look at the sources, as I mentioned at the beginning of this section, carbon monoxide is a product of motor vehicle exhaust. And so transportation is the largest single contributor for the US EPA and that number hasn't changed much over many years, the largest single contributor to sources of carbon monoxide. Indoor sources are things like use of kerosene in space heaters and they're not vented properly, leaking chimneys and furnaces and so on, gas water heaters. So anything that has a fuel. The other of course is ETS or environmental tobacco smoke. It's a source of carbon monoxide. Levels range up to five parts per million. If your gas stove is not properly adjusted and working well, you can get an extra thirty ppm in your home. Now, this is a really interesting slide. This is the concentration of the carbon monoxide and a few other variables that we're going to talk about over a twenty-four hour period. Okay, this is a typical day with high CO concentration. And you can watch, it's up there fairly high. The blue is the carbon monoxide. And you can see that it starts to come down about five in the morning on this typical day and then starts to go up when commuter time starts. People start to drive to work at six and seven and the traffic numbers go up, the yellow line. And then you see that the also the green line, the wind speed goes, everything is sort of moving. So as we go out the door, okay, carbon monoxide is going up as is the vehicular traffic, the time travel, that would be the triangles. The most common CO problems are when we have these inversions. Okay, and this is a slide that could have been in the slide deck for the discussion about the London fog. When you have this warm air inversion, you got a cold air and the cold air, you have an atmospheric version and then the warm air drops, you know, how hot air rises, you know, that's always better live on the second floor. If you rent an apartment and the guy on the first floor, you get his seat for free. But you'll watch and normally because of the temperature gradient, the warm air will continue and then it will be cool air and then cold air. Remember cold air falls. And you see in the picture when you have the inversion, the warm air is acting as a cap over the cold air and the pollution isn't going anywhere. Nitrogen dioxide is a brownish, highly reactive gas. Okay, once again, it's generated from the burning of fossil fuels and for nitric particles, acid aerosols and nitrogen oxides. Once again, the sources are the same, the gas stove, the gas range, okay, any, anything that the gas heater, all these things are primary sources inside your house. Okay, and even if you have a very nice house, well maintained, if it's not vented properly, you can get into trouble. Outdoor concentrations are highest during the rush hour. In the old days, we used to say the rush hour went from about six AM to nine AM and then from five PM till about eight PM. If you live in any big city like we do here in New Jersey or some of you are in Washington and some of you are on the far coast, you know that it's all day traffic all the time. There isn't that time of day when the traffic doesn't come through. Sulfur dioxide, this is a little different now. Finally, we stopped taking the blame on the cars. This time we move it over someplace else. Ambient sulfur dioxide is from stationary sources like what we make our fuel, like where we find our paper and our pulp and oil and other things and anything that's a non-ferrous smelter, non-iron smelter. We will typically see the inside, you know, greater than the outside. Once again, we see irritation to eyes, nose and respiratory tract. It's an ingredient in acid rain, we mentioned that earlier. Okay, and as people are very mindful, it can be very damaging to buildings and monuments. Lead is one of those problems that just doesn't go away. I always teach students and say, if you're desperate for an answer, don't rule out using the word lead. Lead is a wonderful word in public health when you're trying to find something bad to say. It occurs naturally. It can be taken all three routes, dermal, oral and ingestion. The major source for many years, but no longer here in the United States was lead gasoline. I read an interesting paper a few years ago where they were measuring the lead deposition from the shoulder of the road out into a field. And they, it was along the New Jersey Turnpike where there had been lots and lots of traffic for several decades. And the person just wanted, he saw some lead toxicity on some food crops, the extension person from Rutgers. So he went out and he measured lead on a gradient from the, where the road stops and the farmer's field starts. And you could see a gradient, the closer you were to the road, the higher the lead number. So lead is very serious. We know it's a neurotoxin. We know it affects brain development in kids and can cause cancer in some animals because there's lots of digestive and health problems for some people. Particulate matter. Particulate matter is typically abbreviated PM and you'll see like PM ten, PM five and PM two point five. And the PM is usually, you know, that means particulate matter, but the PM ten means particles of ten or less. Okay. If you micro, if you look at PM, if you look at PM two point five, those are the tiniest particles. A lot of times we will see PM two point five standards and they want to keep the very tiny particles out of the lung because once they get trapped in the deep lung, those problems that we mentioned earlier become very, very serious. Particulate matter of course comes from the burning of wood or diesel or other fuels. Agriculture provides a lot of particulate matter. It's not a good thing just from the dust and the dirt from the soil on the crops as well as what they burn. Health effects are primarily nose and throat irritation as well as problems with the lungs. It also can be impossible to see the drive when the large fields start to burn either here in New Jersey. Once in a while you'll see the Turnpike catch a fire up in the Meadowlands in the summer and you barely can see the drive. But when you go to Southeast Asian countries where they burn off literally, you know, thousands of, thousands of hectares of rice paddy, you can see dramatic smoke. So we know that it has environmental effects, it increases the visibility and also over time could just do some serious discoloration and the formation of sulfuric acid and the damage to monuments and churches and other things. Now, this was kind of an interesting slide and I put this in years ago and I like it just for demonstration purposes. For demonstration purposes, you can see the day in the life of one person's exposure to respirable particles. And so when you get out of bed and this person's lazy bones, this graph, they're not getting out till seven thirty. I know my graduate students are further into the slide, but I get up at about five. So I would be right at the beginning of the curve. And they show you how you can get exposed to respirable particles. It's pretty low key on the commute and then you're walking down the street and you start to see it rise. You buy the dump truck or you get into this cafeteria, you can tell how old the slide is because this is cafeteria, smoking section. You can't find the smoking section in cafeteria now, but at the time these authors did this little survey, it was still part of it. You can see the difference between nonsmoker and smoker and then you're back outside. Okay, now it's two o'clock, you're back outside, you're walking along and you start to see once again it increase. And this time you got behind the bus and the bus exhaust was a significant problem. And then you can see what really should surprise you the most, which is why I continued to leave the slide in, is you can see that the largest exposure that this individual had to respirable particles was while they were in their home. Look at that. Isn't that amazing? I think that's just amazing. So what are they doing about it? Well, we gotta do something because most of us, starting with me, spend about eighty-seven and ninety-two percent in glasses in house. And that's a serious issue. Okay, because we have, you know, the large numbers. Even if the concentration is low, you have a long duration. Ninety-five percent of us spend most of our time indoors. So here is, here is the sources of indoor air pollution. Here are the sources of indoor air pollution. Your automobile parked in your garage, a fireplace if you have one. Okay, off gassing from various pieces of furniture, new carpet, recently brought home dry cleaning, all contribute to your indoor air pollution. If you still have a smoker in the house, you are faced additionally with ETS or environmental tobacco smoke. This is less of a problem than it used to be because less people are smoking. However, it's still not a trivial problem. I was in two countries in January, which is why the January version of the webinar was the take one. And I was stunned that in both Thailand and in Burma, that they had about a forty percent male smoking rate, lots and lots of smoke. And so I was exposed to a lot of environmental tobacco smoke for the first time in a long time. It's a major source of indoor air contaminants. There's over four thousand chemicals tucked away in there and we have that side stream smoke and it's, you know, it's exhaled as mainstream smoke. So you're breathing in somebody else's cigarette smoke, but when you exhale it, it's still just like you were a smoker because you brought it in. ETS has over three thousand chemicals in it. Okay, it's known as a human carcinogen and we think there's about three thousand lung deaths per year in people who do not smoke. Asbestos is another bad actor. Asbestos is one that you will find indoor, particularly occasionally outdoor, but usually hard to measure. But indoor, it is a known human carcinogen. You know, there's lots of things we say, oh, it's a probable or it's a possible or we don't know. But asbestos, we clearly know from animal data, from human epidemiological data, you know, from your study of Epi and environmental, because you took the core courses, that there are very few actually proven known carcinogens. There are some, but asbestos is one of the ones that is rock solid in the worst possible way. And of course, you know, it's used for heating insulation, it's used for acoustic insulation, it's used for the floor tiles and the ceiling and it's used for shingles. So I have three of the four right here in the office that I'm talking to you from and it's not making me happy. This is what an asbestos fiber looks like. In addition to causing all the problems it causes, it actually can get into the deep lung. As you see, it's a fairly short little spiky fiber and it can penetrate the deep lung and reside there and cause you an enormous amount of problems. For some of you that are a little older, I remember the day this happened very well, but for some of you that are a little bit older, the World Trade Center is just something that you saw once in a movie. I saw it come down. It was frightening. But one of the interesting things is long before that terrible terrorist effect, people were starting to build this new building and Dr. Irving Selikoff, the famous asbestos physician said, no, you gotta take it out. You can't have it. He was the physician for the trades union and he said, you guys are going to get mesothelioma if you let this happen. And so people took it out. Interestingly, after the nine eleven event, after the nine eleven event, people said, wow, if we had still had asbestos in those buildings, perhaps those buildings would not have fallen down and killed so many people. And of course, you know, most people think that's kind of a far-fetched notion, but they do think that. Another chemical is radon. Radon is colorless and odorless and it doesn't have any taste. It's naturally occurring. Naturally occurring compounds are a real problem for us in environmental health. You know that. Naturally occurring compounds mean we can't find out where it came from. We can't take serious remedial action. We can't send anybody a fine. Radon comes from the DK of radium. It comes up out of the ground. Certain strata, certain pockets of New Jersey are enormously high in radon. I remember my neighbor had a number that was so high, you know, the magic number to get your mortgage is four picocuries per liter. This person had well over a hundred and fifty. The director of the program came out and measured himself because he could not imagine it being that high. And in fact, it was very, very high. So it's really quite an amazing product. Sources of radon, and you can see the many sources here. You also will have the slide deck to look at later, but it comes from many places. I draw your attention to letter F at the bottom right of the slide. The rest of this you can read later. Letter F at the bottom right of the slide is where the drains come into most basements. In homes that don't have a basement, there's a good reason they probably can't get a satisfactory perk. Sometimes it's stylish and what people want, but most often it's because they can't get a perk, so they don't have a basement. They just have a slab. And of course, the radon will come up through the slab. If you have a basement, of course, it'll collect in the basement wells and you'll have a significant radon exposure problem. Now, radon can be remediated when you put in fans and blow out the radon. You have a little trench around the side to, to be able to trap it and then the fans to blow it out. It's kind of an interesting remediation. Radon is in as many as six million homes in our country. It's the number two cause of lung cancer. Number one is smoking. Number two is radon. What is remarkable, of course, that radon and smoking, you can have a synergy when you have radiation effects and you have, you have smoking, you can get a higher rates of lung cancer. Now, the classic story of course is the one that Dr. Selikoff published on, which is if you have X for your exposure from smoking and Y as your exposure for asbestos exposure for cancer, you just don't say X and Y, smoking plus asbestos equals lung cancer, do X times Y. And this was information that was really big information at the time. He was given hard He was given a hard time about how real it is. And of course, it's very real, but there is the multiplicative effect of smoking and asbestos versus just either one alone and the cancer opportunities. So moving from air, we're gonna move across into water. And here we have a photo of the hydrologic cycle, one that you know fairly well. Okay, you can see how it works. What's interesting is that over seventy percent of the surface of the earth is in fact water. Surprisingly, maybe not surprisingly, almost all of it is saltwater. There are two percent that is in glaciers and ice caps. And so at the end of the day, there's less than one percent of fresh water available to you and me for drinking and for doing other kinds of domestic things. Most of that fresh water is in the ground. It's kind of interesting. Humans are absolutely dependent on water. They can go weeks without food. Can't go very long without water, maybe a couple of days if that. I think part of it is because we're almost all made out of water. Sixty-five percent on general, higher percentage in kids. Blood, which is not a surprise, is almost eighty-three percent water. Bones on the other end, it's a little surprising to me, is about twenty-five percent water. So it's serious. And we need at least one to three quarts of water per day just to make our digestive system work, okay? Just to keep the pipes moving. Water is considered to be a finite resource. That means there's a certain amount and that's it. But it's renewable, so it's not necessarily a finite source. The rate for fixation is very slow. The renewal rate is slow and it's fixed. To make everything work well in your house or your apartment or your dorm, you need about a thousand quarts per day of water per person. Sewer systems, urban areas rely on people using a certain amount of water because if they aren't using a certain amount of water, they may be stuck in that particular case, place, and your plumbing isn't gonna work. Your plumbing inside of you isn't gonna work and your plumbing outside isn't gonna make its way. The waste material isn't gonna make its way to the city sewer system. So they're designed to run on about a hundred quarts, about a hundred liters per day. In more affluent societies like where we are right now here in the US, it's typically two to four hundred quarts per person per day. Okay? And it's remarkable to me that people that live in the most impoverished parts of our world can spend up to twenty to twenty-five percent or more of their disposable income just to buy water. That means just that, hey, if you do a better job with access, you can cut diarrhea by a quarter. If you do a better job for access and you do a better job to access and get the better quality, you can reduce it by more than a third. So access, reduce diarrhea by twenty-five percent. Access and quality can reduce it by more than thirty-seven percent. So it wouldn't be a public health review without the little Jon Snow story. And we all know who Jon Snow is or we all too by the time that we take the test. Wink, wink, nudge, nudge. Okay? Jon Snow was a physician who lived in London in the middle eighteen hundreds. And at that time, in eighteen fifty-four, they had a major outbreak of what they were calling Asiatic cholera. It causes terrible results of vomiting and diarrhea. You want to die. You really do. And you get dehydrated because you lost all that liquid. So there are famous renderings of Dr. Snow and others from the hospital that he was employed in at the time dragging water out to the streets. Now, what makes Jon Snow so important? I mean, that's, that's the story so wide. Well, the important part is he was really a shoe leather epidemiologist. Dr. Snow was trained, of course, as a surgeon and he was trained to, you know, manage people that way. Anesthesiology, he was not trained to understand air pollution and environmental health, but he did. And over time, he was able to go ahead and mark the areas where the water pollution was the worst based on the cholera rates. So here's Dr. Snow. And here is the note about cholera, looseness of bowels, beginning of cholera is the beginning of cholera goes on to describe the water quality issues and what to do. Here are the wells in this part of London. And the X is each one is a well. And Dr. Snow, sort of a shoe leather epidemiologist, went ahead and marked the spots where the sick people were. Okay, the deaths from cholera were the dots. And you can see the pump in the middle, this famous Broad Street pump, is where the rates were very high. If you look up in the top of the slide, there are three Xs, which are three wells with almost no, just very few dots for deaths. If you look at the Broad Street pump, that's really the epicenter of this epidemic. And so here is a picture of the Broad Street pump. And the story goes that Dr. Snow went and removed the handle of the pump so that people could not have access to the water from that well. So what's the well look like today? Okay, this is sort of a diagram that came from the United States EPA. And you see here that you have the top where you have what we call the unsaturated zone. Okay, on the surface, you drill with sophisticated equipment through that unsaturated surface till you hit the saturated surface. And then you go ahead and you make the well pipe, call this the casing, continue to go down until either your experience as a well driller or the permit that you have from your local government tells you how many feet you can go till you hit water. And then you're able to go ahead and establish that well. Water pollution, like air pollution, has had great moments, not just Jon Snow, the Broad Street pump, but also in more recent times in eighteen eighties, typhoid killed a hundred out of every hundred thousand people in the US. And one of the most notable times was in eighteen eighty-five when there were ninety thousand victims in Chicago. Why? Because they put the input and the output too close and they were diverting water from Lake Michigan to go ahead and provide this drinking water and they were diverting sewage. They went ahead and the sewage went into Lake Michigan. And so Chicagoans found themselves drinking the same water that they were disposing the sewage in. And then they had ninety thousand very sick and then eventually most of them dead people. Today, we think that there are three million or more kids that die of war or born diarrheal disease. And these are almost all related to very poor water facilities. Municipal solid treatment, I just want to explain to you for a minute what that means. If some of you have gone over it, environmental health, people that aren't environmental health majors, they'll just listen to this long enough to get through the webinar. Historically, fecal wastes were just dumped in cesspools near well. And that worked. Over time, the solid waste would break down and, you know, deteriorate and, and local pathogens would move in and keep things going. And then the flush toilet came along. When the flush toilet came along, things became a problem. Because now it's just not the dry fecal matter that's breaking down and deteriorating. Now you have all this extra water. And the water came through each time you flushed the toilet. And seventy percent of the population nowadays has water that goes to sewage treatment prior to discharge. Back in the nineteenth century, most of the water just stayed there and overflowed and contaminated the area. So we take our water and we run it through a publicly owned treatment work plant, a POTW. And we have primary and secondary treatment. The first batch of water goes through, we remove all the wonderful things like feces and urine and laundry waste and bathing materials and garbage and all sorts of stuff. My friends who actually work at the water plant also remind me that includes baseballs, softballs, dead rats, sometimes bicycles, all sorts of things that come through the sewer. After the primary treatment, we start to drill down, but our primary treatment, we get rid of the suspended solids. We kind of screen it. We make it look for uniform size, the, the waste material that we take out. And the solids are gonna settle out and the water is going to move on. This primary treatment removes more than half of the suspended solids and the biological oxygen demand is reduced by more than twenty percent. Now we move on to secondary treatment and water and this is a little tougher. This depends on what kind of biological process the state has decided to use. And we have trickling filters that take a long time, places that are hard pressed for, for water supply are less likely to, you know, let the water spend time there, although they have to for some systems. We run activated sludge through there, carbon compound to sort of flocculate, F L O, flock, flocculate the solid particles that come together and then they get skimmed off. And that secondary treatment is going to go ahead and take out ninety, ninety-five percent of the solids. So we're gonna further reduce the solids. We're gonna further reduce the biochemical oxygen demand. I said to you earlier that septic systems are the, you know, the forerunner to these cesspools, or the, or excuse me, are the grandchildren of these cesspools. Today in the United States, about a third of all homes are served by septic system. I have a septic system because I live out in Burlington County, New Jersey. If I lived here in Brunswick or North Brunswick or one of the suburban areas, I would have city water. The problem is with septic systems that they are literally a haven for all sorts of diseases from hepatitis A and typhoid, salmonellosis and other things. There's a serious issue. The septic system has two parts. Part that's buried in the ground, okay, connected by a pipe. And then this field that is a leach field that usually has a sand filter. So the sewage is in this holding tank. It decomposes. The lighter solids, the grease and the gas rise to the top and the heavier stuff to the bottom. About every three or five years, you should have your septic system pumped out, get rid of the solids and yuck. And so you can see from this picture that, you know, the water goes out of the house when you flush it, goes into the tank, it settles, the solids settle out or collected. And then the water makes its way out into a leach field and goes back down into the groundwater bed. So here it looks like again, you can see what the home looks like. Groundwater pollution also can have chemicals, biological and radiological pollutants in them. It's not just all old industrial compounds and metals and things like that. Everybody unfortunately has a seat at the table for this one. The degradation by us humans occurs largely from faulty waste plants and poor land management when it comes to groundwater pollution. The primary drinking water contaminants are chlorinated solids because of, you know, they come from industrial processes and they cause cancer. THMs are trihalomethanes. These are a reaction with the chlorine, which is very cheap and good to use in the, in the water. Chlorine will go ahead and get rid of most of the bacteria. It's highly efficient. It's very inexpensive. It's worked well for a long time. The downside is that you form something called disinfection byproducts, okay? And disinfection byproducts, DBPs, the primary DBP is THM. And you're saying, my goodness, my head's gonna explode. So the primary challenge is with the chlorine mixing with organic material, you will have the formation of trihalomethanes. And they cause liver and kidney damage and certain types of cancer. Lead, our favorite, remember I told you lead's always a safe answer? Lead's in homes as well because of your old drinking water pipes, the old infrastructure. And we know long-term lead is gonna cause all sorts of neurological problems. PCBs are also primary drinking water contaminants that are particularly associated with industrial areas, okay? And waste from manufacturing operations that cause lung cancer, liver cancer, liver damage, all sorts of things. Bacterias and viruses, now we're into the biotic version of the risk. Leaking tanks, overflowing sewer lines, you get GI illness, things like meningitis. Oh, here's a little soundbite about the THMs, okay? High doses, they're known to cause liver and kidney cancer disorders, excuse me, central nervous system and so on. It is a big deal. Lead affects more than fifty million Americans because of older housing stock or older infrastructure in cities. Lead is introduced in the home even today when people solder. They might not have lead pipes like my grandmother always did, but the plumber comes in to solder pipes together. They well have been providing ambient lead in the room that he was lighting up and doing that little service. Coliform bacteria, coliform bacteria are an indicator. They don't necessarily mean it's a bad thing, but depending on how many of them there are, we can see the potential for the cause of disease, okay? So they're indicator. You have coliform bacteria and you encounter them, they're telling you something else is wrong, not that if you've got one in your mouth, it's not gonna be a big deal. I meant to mention this earlier, that low VOD means it's good. High VOD means it's bad. The scenario, as I mentioned, for the school would lead us to having lower VOD, higher water quality. The plant as the water passes through it goes through a series of activities. The water first settles out. It's a process called sedimentation. Then they do coagulation. They usually add hydrated aluminum sulfate to have the stuff form flocks, F L O C S, that precipitate out. And then finally they filtrate it and they disinfect it. Disinfection is, for years, the standard was chlorine. Now there are other compounds used as well as ozone and UV light. A little piece of trivia, the next time that you have a party and someone asks a question, you can answer with, you know that the first city to use chlorination was Chicago in eighteen, nineteen oh eight. And that's when they ask you to be removed from the party. But that is a little trivial fact. We like to use chlorine because it stays in the pipes longer. It's got good staying power. It's very cheap and it works really well. So if it's cheap and it works well and it stays in the system even if a pipe breaks, this is all a good thing. Here is a well. It may not be your well or my well, but it is a well. It's a well in Romania that is very open and subject to lots and lots of microbial and other contaminants. However, behind this picture is a small horse barn where the physician in town, the woman is also a physician, that's my friend, but the physician in town doesn't like to eat a lot of things there. He likes to eat meat. So he doesn't eat all of those other products. But, you know, in time, in time, of course, it's gonna cost him more to produce them and then he may come back over on our side. I put this slide in and let me know that we're more than two-thirds done. I put this slide in so that you would realize the challenges for people who need global water supplies. This is the water supply in this village. This is where kids are swimming and taking a bath and probably peeing and doing everything else. If you look at the top, you see mama's doing laundry. The other lady is bringing buckets of laundry on her head home for domestic use. This is all a big deal, but this is why we have so many problems associated with water pollution. So here's a new well dug by the mayor and a community layer, a leader. So the mayor is over there on one side and she said, oh, Dr. Robson, would you like some water? I go, no, I'm good. Because I looked over, as you can see in the picture, the men's latrine, this is public housing, is on one side of the slide. And the women's latrine's on the other side and it's all open. And I said, don't you think it would have been smarter to put that well someplace away from the latrines? And she goes, oh, you don't get it, do you, Dr. Robson? I said, that's often the case. She goes, yes, if we put it somewhere else, people are going to keep using the old well that's not safe. If we put it in the path that they walk on, their likelihood of using the well is much greater. So she had her reasons. I understood them and I respect them. And if you had put that well off to the side, it would eventually fall apart with no use and the old well would continue to be used. So this is kind of the physiology of a well. If you look at it quickly, you can see, you know, there's a screen down there where you go into the ground, usually some concrete grout around the, 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 the pump itself, okay? The actual place where the water is extracted from the ground veins and up into the system. I want to give you an example of a little study we did. And we'll take our next break just to talk about the importance of this water. This is a village in the southern part of Thailand. And each red dot is a house that has a water contamination, contaminated with arsenic this time, between two hundred and a thousand parts per billion. The yellow dot is a house that has arsenic contamination, two hundred parts per billion or less. And the blue dot is a house that doesn't have a well, but it's a house. You gotta mark it. When you have arsenic exposure, one of the primary symptoms you see is what we call Bowen's disease. You see the stippling of the skin, in this case of this Thai person. Thai people have a little more melanin in their skin than do Caucasian people, so it's a little easier to see. From there, you see a classic arsenic contamination. From there, you see a classic arsenic contamination, Palmer Planer carotid lesions. The physicians and the nurses on the webinar will recognize this. And these raised lesions are really classic arsenic exposure. And finally, in this village, it was full-blown skin cancer. And so those wells were shallow wells, highly contaminated with arsenic, sometimes a thousand ppb. How do you beat this? Well, you beat it finding new wells, and they're deep wells, much deeper than the shallow well that is just naturally high in arsenic, is a machine well that goes way down, but that costs a lot of money. The Japanese government provided the money in this area and the Thai people went ahead and dug the deeper wells. This, these wells, where this little boy is, have almost no level of arsenic. Okay, it is now three ten. I'll see you back at three twenty. Okay, we're in the home stretch. And I know it's been long, but we're, we're getting close, I promise. And you've been very kind and I am very appreciative of that. I have to tell you, I'm more tired than I thought in today's adventure here, but I, I certainly, certainly appreciate. I'm looking at some of the questions now. They, one of the questions the person asked me is about, you know, the mother of toxicology should have been Rachel Carson and not a murderer, LaCrisia Borja. Sit tight, Rachel Carson's getting props any minute now as we start the, the next part of the webinar, okay? We're gonna talk about food a little bit, then about kids and wrap it up. So the food issue is terribly important, of course, in a world that's got seven point two billion people. By the time many of you are my age, I will be dead, but the world will have nine billion people by twenty fifty. And it's gonna take a lot of ingenuity, a lot of food and a lot of environmental resources. Food comes in all sorts of varieties, from the rice and the rice fatty salve that has a direct environmental effect, to fresh fruits and vegetables, to fish and all sorts of things. It really is a serious and important matter. You gotta have these different foodstuffs to make it all work. So we're gonna talk about how we protect ourselves with food. And one of the things we're gonna talk about is what kind of protective equipment do you use when you grow the food with pesticides? Pesticides are an important environmental input in food production, and yet people don't always know how to use them properly. Here's a survey we did a few years ago. What type of protective equipment do you use when you mix and apply pesticides? And you can see the number one answer is none. And then look at Sonny Lance. This was done in Thai and translated back into English so we could use it today. Chemical protective mask, normal mask, again, people have different terms for things. Knitting faces hat and loincloth. We, and the rest you can read yourself. The idea is that people have strange terms sometimes for what they use. So here's the knitting faces hat. This is a situation where the person is applying pesticides in great numbers in vegetables and rice in Thailand, and he's wearing a ski mask. Ski mask made of cotton that acts as a sink to hold the pesticides, in a cotton shirt that shorts sleeve with cotton shorts and no shoes. And this person sees themselves as being fully protected in food production with use of pesticides. Not a good thing. So there's lots of opportunity here to train people. This is an example where environmental inputs like pesticides in the developing world, like in this case Thailand, are used to increase rice production, which is a good thing, but without product stewardship and without proper training, the risk is enormous. The environmental health consequences are great. Here's a person applying pesticides in an orange grove up in the northern part of Thailand in Chiang Mai, Chiang Rai, Chiang Mai area. Again, he's got a mask on. It's a surgical mask. That mask appeared on him about the time that I appeared to take the picture. And, you know, it, it was given to him for some protection, clearly not the right mask, but, you know, it was there because there was a foreign visitor there. It is a challenge. The challenge is great. And you know, we're getting close to the end, so I just wanted to just touch base about the pesticides. I truncated this a little bit and I'm regretting that now because we're actually going to end early for change. Last time we went over. So let me just spend a minute and talk about what was truncated. The idea is that we started to use pesticides enormously after the Second World War. The first pesticides that we started to use were those that were the chlorinated compounds, the persistent compounds. Someone said in the question, the little comment, we should talk about Rachel Carson. We are now. Rachel Carson's landmark book in nineteen sixty-two, Silent Spring, was one of the first and most important environmental texts written to describe the impact of pesticides on the environment. And of course, people didn't understand that. She, she talked about Silent Spring. There were no birds because of the endocrine effects on the eggs. The calcium was not distributed properly in the egg, and so the bird sat on the egg and the eggshell broke, and hence there were no baby birds. It was a silent spring. But what really what Rachel Carson demonstrated is the impact of these chemicals in the environment, not just the birds, but the fish and the wildlife, and eventually you and I as the ultimate consumers of these other products. Rachel Carson showed us that when you tamper with a, an environmental system, when you mess with the ecosystem, the results can be disastrous. And when you try to just use one or two tools to combat, in this case, insects and other pests and don't balance it, then you're going to have a disaster. Rachel Carson was a pioneer. She was a courageous woman. She was brilliant. But what she was more than anything else is she was a spectacular communicator. And that book is still on shelves around the world and continues to be reproduced. So the chlorinated compounds were the early ones, the DDT, alder, nealdor, heptachlor, the persistent chlorinated compounds that are lipophilic, fat-loving. They bioaccumulate in you and me as well as the animals that take them, but they're persistent. Their claim was they were persistent. They lasted in the environment a very long time. And because they lasted in the environment a very long time, we find ourselves with them applied in the sixties. And if we took a soil sample today in two thousand and seventeen, most of that pesticide would still be there. In the nineteen sixties, we moved away from the chlorinated compounds after Rachel Carson's book and other research made its way into more popular venues where other people besides agriculturalists and pesticide manufacturers paid attention, and the government started to pay attention. And we moved to organophosphate kinds of compounds. Again, the focus all those early years were insects and insecticides. Organophosphate insecticides are potent neurotoxins. They affect the nervous system very, very dramatically. They lower the colon esterase level. They suppress colon esterase so that you can't combat the reaction of the sympathetic nervous system and you literally convulse yourself to death. In more recent times, we use synthetic compounds like synthetic pyrethroids, which mimic the pyrethrin, the plant material that is harvested from the chrysanthemum and other plants. They have, are naturally occurring insecticides. They have synthetic analogs of these and they've made their way into the pesticide scheme. The problem is that each time that we run away from one kind and go to another, we limit our toolbox. We, we create a new set of problems. So food production for these extra two billion people soon is gonna have to be smarter. We're gonna have to learn how to integrate and manage pests culturally. We're gonna have to compensate for things like climate change. We're gonna have to manage the balance between the cost of the chemicals with what, you know, farmers in the developing world can afford. And finally, we're gonna have to, most importantly, make sure that these are things that are not going to have long-term human health problems. And we're gonna finish up with kids and use the pesticide example with some of the children. I love this picture. I stole it from my friend, Dr. Nancy Fiedler, who I'm sure stole it from somebody else. I'm sure you can just Google and find this. You know, in public health, we don't steal, we borrow. So I'm a great borrower, as are most of you. One of the great truisms is in toxicology that humans are not simply big rats. And a more important one is that children are not simply small adults. So children are very different. They have differences in intake and body weight for air, food and water. They have different pharmacokinetic behaviors for how they absorb, distribute, metabolize and excrete chemicals. So when you have a model for an adult, it is typically not the best model for a child. And it's kind of amazing, you know, in kids, the concept is we go from really just two cells. In twenty-six weeks, we can go from just the two cells, the egg and the sperm, and we find ourselves with a five hundred gram, a one pound human. And then if you add on the rest of the gestation period, you have somebody that weighs about seven pounds, well, a bit more than six pounds to eight pounds. This is pretty remarkable. And in that time period, of course, most of the organ systems are developed. They can survive outside of the womb. It's a little risky at twenty-six weeks, but they can do it. And survival with new technology in hospitals is getting to be more and more likely. So it's, it's, it's a new approach to things. And it's, there we go. Add the twelve more weeks and you got this seven point five pound, about three and a half kilogram organism, a new person, and he or she is ready to go. And then from birth through adolescence, we start to see maturation, and with that maturation, the impact, both positive and negative, of the environment. You know, some systems are fairly well-developed at the time of birth. Other systems are much less well-developed, and if there is damage from an environmental chemical early in the process, then we have a lifelong problem or disability for the new child. Children, as I said, absorb things faster, okay? The absorption rate is considerably higher. That means the chemical that we don't want can accumulate faster and we can actually have a more enhanced toxic effect, something we don't want. The neonate doesn't always have the ability to eliminate drugs. Some of them eliminate drugs or chemicals via the kidney. The major excretion pathway is different because that organ is not developed that much in the new child. Respiratory rates are much different too, okay? They consume, they inspire air much higher than, at a rate than adults, okay? And so if you have particulate size that makes its way down into the deep lung, something that's less than five microns, okay? In diameter, do you really have a serious problem in this young developing lung, okay? You know, newborn has about ten million of the alive. By the time they get to be eight, they're up to three hundred, like, like an adult. Okay, the, the surface area in the deep lung is going to increase over time. And of course, so is the gastric stage by about twenty-fold. So this wonderful little EPA cartoon shows very well, you know, that we're not adults, a little adults, you know, we are children. We are unique. We have these different rates. We have learned in the last two decades that things like autism, okay? Environmental predictors for autism, environmental causes of autism. Now, some people argue, well, we're doing